Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
If we're here, there's access here and here. All right, can I have a motion to open the regular meeting of the planning board of August 27?
No, second.
On favor?
Aye.
We're gonna have just a slight change in the order of things tonight. We're gonna move the discussion of keen stud to the end of the application, at the end of the agenda, so we're gonna start off with often said.
I'd like to move that we accept the agenda. I'll second move.
All in favor?
Aye.
David, are you here representing yourself?
I am, I'm representing myself.
Okay. You wanna just give a little background?
Sure.
Describe the application?
Yeah, I mean, here's the map that we submitted. The gray part up there is the overall site that we own. And I'm proposing to subdivide Lot Two from the rest of it, so that I can sell that piece of property to someone who will renovate the Old Yale farmhouse, which is located there. So, accordingly, I need to get a subdivision approved, so that the Lot Two, which is about thirteen and a half acres, can be sold to someone who will take care of it.
Great, okay. John?
Yes, you should have a brief memo from me. This project's in about, just about every district we have. It's in rural residential, rural agricultural. Portions are in the historic preservation, the stream corridor, both of the valley aquifers, and portions in the scenic visual protection zone, all of which are indicated on the plat. They did it, they learned from their last experience, so they're there. And as Mr., the parcel itself is located in the agricultural district, and my understanding is bits and pieces of it are currently used for agricultural purposes. It's a simple subdivision. They're dividing one large parcel into two parcels. This is considered a minor subdivision under the town code. It needs to be processed, it should be processed, excuse me, as a minor subdivision. A public hearing will be required. The owner's consent note will need to be signed and dated following the date of last revision. The surveyor certification will be need, signed and sealed prior to signature by the chairman. Permission to file will need to be obtained from the Dutchess County Department of Health prior to signature by the chairman. They did include a completed short environmental assessment form. No conditions of concern were identified, although a couple of the answers were incomplete. As, this is a simple subdivision, there are no physical improvements. The only thing that I would note for the record, the parcel appears to be in the Weebetuck Agricultural Valley Historic District. Since there's no action, there's no impact on that, but it should be in the record. We also recommend that the agricultural data statement be revisited. A check of the current tax rolls suggests that a number of properties within 500 feet are within the ag district. It's the town custom and practice to notify any parcel in the ag district of the action. And as far as I'm concerned, the application is otherwise substantially complete. And since this does need a public hearing, we take no exception to scheduling a public hearing for the next available planning board meeting. And those are my comments, Madam Chair.
Paul?
Agree with that.
Okay. One thing, we'll take questions from the board. One thing, if you run the short EAF through the EAF map, it'll fill out all the answers that you have, that you were like not sure.
So how do I do that?
It'll check in for you. Someone can help you, or you can just email me and we can show you how to do it. But it'll, some of the stuff that you just marked not sure,
Yeah.
the D C's website will
Awesome.
search all these databases and fill in it for you, so.
And you may have, it may send you to others as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that should satisfy John, one of John's concerns. Does anybody else have any question?
What size is the two parcels that you provided?
Well, the Lot, Lot Two, which is the one that's being divided off, is about thirteen point five acres. And then the rest of the lot is, adds up to one hundred and fifty-seven, one hundred and fifty-eight acres.
Okay, so just taking a chunk off.
Yeah, exactly.
All right.
Exactly.
Just out of curiosity, what crops do you grow?
I don't grow anything. There, I have a guy who hays part of the property now. But I have someone interested in buying it who intends to grow vegetables.
And just to be clear, the Kent Road is a physical cutoff between these two that you're doing.
Correct, correct.
So everyone knows, it's not that you're like, just splitting them. There's a road there.
There's a road there. Yep.
Well, I thought there was a tree farm right there. That one guy, no. One parcel.
Anyone else, Jamie?
Nope.
All right. So, you'll satisfy some of John's comments. And I think, as long as we get all of that information back in, what, a week? Doable?
That's doable.
Okay, so John, a week from today?
Yes.
We can schedule the public hearing due for, not the tenth, but the next one, right? Which would be twenty-fourth. Which is actually a holiday, I will confirm with you. But
Well, that's something that I'd like to bring up for discussion.
Yeah, okay, so nine twenty-four. Theoretically, is your public hearing?
Theoretically, I may be traveling then, so we may have to find another date, but.
Okay. It's not that, then, the following meeting, which would be ten eight?
The eighth, yes.
Would you prefer that we just set it for that day?
I, I don't have my calendar handy. Well, maybe I do, I have my phone. Should be able to figure this out. Actually, I'll be traveling both September twenty-four and ten-eight.
About the twenty-second of October.
That'll work.
Okay.
Okay, schedule the public hearing for the twenty-second of October. And materials to John by next one. I guess you have a little more time.
Got a little more time.
Yeah.
I don't think it'll take that much time, but, thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All set?
Yeah, all set.
Okay.
Do we need a motion? We usually do, but.
Sure, can I have a motion to schedule the public hearing for the option Lot One, just before ten twenty-two? Three seconds? All right, got that, Jamie? Condo, Silo Condo D and E, that's done. Patrick.
Good evening, Patrick O'Leary, on behalf of Silo Ridge. Tonight, with respect to Condo D and E, I believe the board has a number of resolutions in front of them. Over the past ten months, I hope we have demonstrated clearly that the minor site plan modification and master plan amendment, changing thirteen townhomes to, Silo and is up. That's Silo and. I think it would just be the chart for. That's Silo and as well. I don't know if the board needs a graphic for this.
I don't think at this juncture it has any value.
I concur. So I think over the past ten months, we've demonstrated it is a minor site plan modification, switching out thirteen townhomes to two condominium buildings of six and four units totaling ten. There's been no impact to infrastructure sewer water, otherwise there are no visual impacts, no fiscal impacts associated with it. We have addressed all the comments provided by your staff, your engineer and attorney regarding the subdivision plan and the site plan. And we certainly do understand that there may be additional comments from Mr. Andrews on the site plan that may need to be incorporated in our final plan set prior to seeking signature of the chairman. We've also worked through workforce housing issues. It's addressed within the resolution. I think we accept the resolution as it stands. It incorporated a good deal of information pertinent to the number of units. And otherwise, I'll leave that to Mr. Van Cot as he reads the resolution. And with that, Madam Chair, I'd like to turn it back to you and the board to consider the resolutions at hand.
Thank you, John?
I basically had no comments, they are, they are ready. I think the only matter, as Mr. O'Leary indicated, that was, was hanging out there, that needed a resolution that was beyond our ability to resolve, was the workforce housing matter, which I think has been addressed. And I, again, I would defer to Paul on these. I've reviewed them, I take no issue with either of the resolutions.
Thank you. Paul?
And we have prepared both a site plan resolution, which would allow for the replacement of the thirteen townhomes with ten condominiums. We also have a subdivision resolution, which would provide for the consolidation of all of the involved lots and one common lot into one lot, so, you know, going from thirteen to one. So that, those are the two resolutions we have with respect to the workforce housing fee. The original special permit for Silo Ridge required Silo to comply with the then version of the workforce housing law. The workforce housing law, as everyone knows, was revised in 2023. And this is an application that actually arises under the new law. So, the town board and the planning, or the town board and the applicant have been in discussions about how to deal with the fact that the law has changed and there's different numbers that the two sides have been looking at. And, and my understanding is they're, you know, getting, reaching a point where there's some substantial agreement. So, that would not be relevant to us but for the workforce housing law, which says that as a condition of any approval, the planning board has to establish a fee schedule. In this case, that fee schedule's gonna be, you know, established between the parties, the town board and Silo. So, what we've tried to do here is to basically acknowledge that and to say, you know, that prior to any site plan being signed, that schedule will be, you know, must be provided to the board, so that it can be part of the resolution, your approval resolution. What I did do is I changed, you know, one of the paragraphs. It's a whereas paragraph, because the board really, you know, doesn't see itself as, we're not in the middle of this, the planning board is not in the middle of this. Is this a town board matter, or is the zoning law matter? In this case, it's a town board matter because of the change in the law. So, we have a whereas clause that we tweaked a little bit that says, whereas acknowledging ongoing discussions between the applicant and the town board and the planning board's obligations under the zoning law, the planning board finds that establishing a revised schedule as a condition of an approval of condo D and E site plans will satisfy the planning board's obligations under the zoning law. And that needs, that, needs the legally binding agreement upon the applicant and authorized by the town board. So it's, it's consistent with the planning board's role and not being, we're not, even though the zoning law says we're supposed to establish one, really that should be coming to us from either the workforce housing board under normal circumstances, or in this case, where we're dealing with not, you know, sort of extraordinary circumstances through the discussions between the town board and Silo. So that's, that's what we have. I can read briefly the now therefor's? Okay. Now therefore being resolved, the planning board hereby approves condo D and E's amended site plans, last revised March twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Be it further resolved that prior to the chairperson signing the approved site plans, person to zoning law revised fee schedule that's legally binding on the applicant and authorized by the town board shall be provided for the payment of fees in lieu of building workforce housing units per Phase One of the Silo Ridge project. There's another requirement of the zoning law. Notes referencing the fee schedule and its establishment as a required condition, person to the zoning law shall be included on the final approved amended site plans signed by the chairperson. The applicant, two, the applicant shall address the comments set forth in a letter to the planning board from John Andrews, dated May twenty-seventh, twenty-five. Three, the applicant shall fully complete the amended subdivision process associated with this, and shall provide proof of filing, the completed plat in the office of the Dutchess County Clerk. And four, the applicant shall pay any outstanding invoices incurred in connection with reviewing and processing this, processing this application. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby authorizes the chairperson to stamp and sign the approved amended site plans upon the applicant's compliance with the above conditions and submission requirements stated herein. The signed site plan shall be referred to as the final approved amended site plan. Be it further resolved that the original special permit in Phase One site plan approval and conditions thereof remain in full force and effect. Be it further resolved that as an ongoing condition, the applicant shall comply with a fee schedule and pay all required fees in lieu of constructing workforce housing for Phase One of the Silo project in accordance with its terms. Be it further resolved that in accordance with the zoning law, this amended approval shall expire if the applicant fails to commence construction, obtain necessary building permit, or fails to comply with the conditions of this amended approval within eighteen months of its issuance. The planning board may grant a one-time six-month extension, and this amended approval may be revoked if the applicant violates the approval of its conditions. Any violation of this approval or its conditions shall be deemed a violation of the zoning law and subject to enforcement. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be filed in the office of the town clerk within five days and shall be mailed to the applicant within the same five-day period, and this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to, I don't think I have my horns, nothing else. Be, be it further resolved at the bottom of page four, regarding applicant's fails to commence construction. So we approved this, and they have eighteen months from the time we approve it, let's say here tonight, to start construction. But let's say they don't come up with a fee schedule in the country. Does their eighteen months start once they reach the fee schedule agreement with the town board? Or it starts with our approval tonight? It, the eighteen months starts with the approval tonight and the effective date of the resolution. So, and that, but, you know, again, I mean, there's, and we've been in this place before with other applications where, you know, the time, the eighteen months period is, has elapsed. The six-month extension has elapsed, and they've had to come back again and reapply. And then, so we've dealt with that as well. I don't, I don't think anybody anticipates that, you know, this will take that long. And they have other things to do, and hopefully, you know, everything will be, you know.
Eighteen months was the speed of light.
I think, I think Silo would like to get these condos under construction.
I think Silo would be like to get a C O in eighteen months. So I think, it's not soon.
Okay, thank you, so, yeah.
Anyone else? All right, so there's a motion on, can I, I'll make, I'll make some motion that we, for the resolution granting amended site plan as amended based on Paul's revised language.
Thank you.
Judy?
Before going resolution was voted upon with all members of the planning board voting as follows. Robert Boyle's junior chairperson, absent. Nina Peak, deputy chairperson?
Yes.
Lizette Bullock, absent. James Walsh?
Yes.
Walter Dietrich?
Yes.
Kenneth Topolsky?
Yes.
And Jamie Vitello?
Abstained.
Motion carries.
We have a second resolution. This one, this one's quick, quick and easy. Again, this is consolidation of the lots involved with the townhomes. And then there's a little bit of common lot that's also, will become part of this consolidated lot. And, and to the now therefor's. Now therefore being resolved that the planning board hereby conditionally approves the amended Phase One A plat prepared and last revised March twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Prior to the chairperson signing the approved amended plat, planning board attorney shall approve as to form any revised easements or other legal instruments. The final plat sheets and L I L Rs for the approved amended Phase One plat shall be submitted in a form that's acceptable at the town engineer. The final plats and sheets shall be endorsed by Dutchess County Department of Health. Four, the applicant shall satisfy all comments set forth in the May twenty-seventh letter from the town engineer. And fifth, the applicant shall pay any outstanding invoices of the planning board's consultants. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby authorizes the chair to stamp and sign the amended Phase One A plat upon the applicant's compliance with those conditions. The signed plat shall be referred to as the final approved amended Phase One A plat. Be it further resolved that all of the terms and conditions set forth in the final subdivision approval, and that's, that's the original approval of the Silo Ridge subdivision. There's several pages of history here that we cite before we get to the resolve clauses. But that shall remain, all those conditions remain in effect. Be it further resolved that person of the subdivision law, this conditional approval shall expire within one hundred and eighty days unless all the conditions are fulfilled. Planning board may extend the time for gaining, fulfilling the conditions by periods of ninety days each if the planning board determines in its discretion that such extension is warranted. Phase One A, amended Phase One A plat shall automatic, conditional approval shall automatically terminate if the approval expires without need for any other action by the planning board. Person of the subdivision law, the applicant shall record the final approved amended Phase One A plat once it's been signed by the chairman within sixty-two days. Has to go to the Dutchess County Clerk's office. Be it further resolved that in, if the event that it's not filed within sixty-two days, that final plat will expire and a new application will have to be submitted. Be it further resolved in accordance with subdivision law, no changes shall be made to the final plat. In the event that a final plat when recorded contains any such changes, the plat shall be considered, Nolan Boyd and the planning board shall institute proceedings to have it stricken from, it's nice to use that word, stricken, from the records of the Dutchess County Clerk's office and town clerk's office. Be it further resolved that if any condition or part of this resolution's annulled, the remainder shall stay in effect. And the planning board reserves the right to revoke this approval after a hearing if it determines that as a result of such annulment by a court of competent jurisdiction that the Silo Ridge project no longer complies with the subdivision law or the zoning law. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be filed in the clerk within five days and also mailed to the applicant. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, can I have a motion?
I immediately accept the resolution.
Thank you.
Judy?
Before going resolution was voted upon with all members of the planning board voting as follows. Robert Boyle's junior chairperson, absent. Nina Peak, deputy chairperson?
Yes.
Lizette Bullock, absent. James Walsh?
Yes.
Walter Dietrich?
Yes.
Kenneth Topolsky?
Yes.
Jamie Vitello?
Abstained.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to the board members and all the staff. It's been a lot of work for everybody. Hopefully, it's been informational. And we started with a good project, and it's better now because of all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, you can stay silent. You're up.
Now it's too hard for me to read.
Come tell me, uh.
Good evening again. Before you, we have submitted a site plan modification for Silo. It's a recreation facility located on Route twenty-two and has access to Silo Ridge itself. The site is partially constructed, and during the construction process and continued planning process on the project, a number of suggestions had been made to Discovery and Silo Ridge staff to incorporate some changes into Silo and that would be beneficial to the clients that are using it. As you're looking at the screen, on the left-hand side is an access road going down to Silo. I'll backtrack for a minute and thank the board members and people from the community who attended the site visit last week with us. We actually drove all the way down the road there going into Silo so that you could get a look at it. As you look at this graphic here, it's very hard to depict the changes and come up with a way to graphically do it that would be easy to look at. But what you have is, in red, is what was approved under the original site plan. You can see to the top left-hand side, six courts up there, tennis courts, bedel, pickleball courts. Over to the right-hand side is the ice arena. There's a minor revision associated with it, shifting it to the north a little bit, not very dramatic. And the Zamboni shed to the south has changed in size and configuration, not significant in nature. The more significant changes occur toward the center of the site. The drive aisle entering the site and the turnaround has changed to provide better access, ADA access to the facilities, as well as a larger area to drop off for children, patrons, and otherwise. The sketch you see in front of you, the fieldhouse with, to the northerly side, was approved. That's in the red up there, right where the cursor is right now. In addition to that, just to the south of that area, we're proposing an additional portion of the building that was originally dedicated to an open field, playfield. Now, relative to that building, being consistent with what we've said over the past year, we're not going to try to avoid any of these incremental changes every year or every two years to a site plan. There's no plan to build that additional building at this time. They're building the fieldhouse, they're gonna apply for a building permit under the original site plan. But we wanted to put on and demonstrate on this site plan and the modification, what could possibly happen in three to five years or not happen. We see it being consistent with the modifications that we are approving. The site plan modification will have an expiration date if it's not built by then, and they try to do it sometime in the future. Ten years from now, they would have to come back to the board to receive the approval. But what we're trying to avoid is using the board's time and the community's time with little incremental changes, adding on five thousand square feet or adding elements to it incrementally, and put everything on your plate at one time for an approval standpoint. The center of the site has been revised. The pickleball fields have been removed. The pickleball fields have been removed. Now, it's a playground area, playscape areas. Storm drains have been revised on the site. On the bottom left-hand side, over by the proposed fieldhouse, used to be a large detention facility, above-ground detention facility. Working with Mr. Andrews over the course of the past year, we developed a better stormwater management plan for the site that actually captures the water from the access road instead of bringing it all the way down into the site and through the garden areas. We're actually diverting it about midway on the hillside, carrying it across the site, the backside of the fieldhouse location. And you can see there's where that road is up across Harlem Valley, putting a pipe network in there that's connecting to the pond over there. Pond, you know, if you look at it this time of year, is quite low on water, and it provides an opportunity to help sustain the pond. And it also gets rid of some of the above-ground detention systems, which I don't think, you know, can be nice, but quite often they become overgrown with fragmites and they're less appealing. So, we're able to get rid of the above-ground detention, put it over in the pond, which is well-maintained. It's good from a water resource management standpoint. It's constructable. Mr. Andrews has had some comments on it and has identified that we do need to get an easement from Harlem Valley Landfill to pipe the network across there as well as the stormwater. We think the changes are minor. Mr. Andrews has identified that we should submit an EAF with it. I didn't think the changes were substantive enough to warrant it. We're going to provide the EAF for consistency. No argument on our point. We agree fully with it. We'll get that in within the next couple of weeks. Mr. Andrews also suggested in his comments that we set a time to meet to go over some technical issues. His fifth comment was, I believe, there are a number of minor technical components that still need adjustment to the plan. I'll organize a meeting with Mr. Andrews, VHB, and myself to work through any of those comments. And with that, Madam Chair, I'd like to turn it back to the board. I know you have a full agenda tonight, so I'll try to keep things brief. We have some work to do on the application with the staff, but at this time, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions for you.
Okay. John?
Yes, you should have gotten an email from me. I'll try to be brief. They did have a whole list of proposed modifications. If you look carefully at the application packet, there is an attachment A. It does a fairly good job of outlining all the modifications, although it may miss a few. But in general, the proposed modifications are physical in nature, involving buildings, utilities, stormwater, lighting, and modifications to the site layout. Based on the information provided, there's no proposed change in use. So, therefore, they're not seeking to amend their special permit. This is still going to be a recreation facility, and it's essentially involving the same elements. As I described it to Paul, they basically took some of the exterior elements and are proposing to put them in buildings and basically reconfigure what's left to be a little more efficient and a little more appealing to their likely user population. This is, it was a major site plan, but pursuant to your town code, you can look at the proposed amendments, and as long as they're consistent with the applicable special permit approval or if no special permit approval is required, and they do not represent a substantial change from the approved site plan, you can grant an amendment without a public hearing. I would suggest that's something you may want to consider, but we do need some additional information before you make that determination. I gave you a little bit of history. I think you're all familiar with it because this had a rather inauspicious start back in 2024, but I think we ironed out all the bugs. I do have a couple of comments. The first one, I didn't comment on the changes to the access road. The changes to the access road were basically, they had it on a plan. The contractor went out there and, following the path of least resistance, because he hit rock and a few other things, made some minor tweaks. It generally complies with what was originally proposed. We made some modifications out there in the field just to adjust locations to physically limit the amounts of disturbance they had to do. And I think this is fairly representative of where we ended up, and it achieves the same end, and I think with a little less site disturbance. They did not submit an updated FEAF. It's somewhat of a technicality, but they are proposing to modify a site plan. We do need an updated FEAF. And basically, you had adopted a negative declaration. And what they need to demonstrate is that despite the modifications, they're not introducing any new or differing significant adverse environmental impacts. That falls on them. They did also, as part of the prior approval, submit an operational plan, which detailed how the site would be operated, complete with an operation schedule. It should be probably updated and restated, if appropriate, for their current proposal because if you look at the footprints for the fieldhouse and what they're proposing, a lot of stuff that was outside has been moved inside, and so the hours of operation may change, but they would be interior to a building, not outside on the site. But anyway, I think you need to revisit that. They do propose a lot of modifications to site lighting. It's predominantly involving differing fixture types and locations. They've basically tweaked everything to meet their current site plan, and they picked a different group of fixture types that are a little bit more consistent. Unfortunately, they submitted a rather detailed footcandle plan, but it's kind of difficult to work your way through because of the, you have to almost look at it on the computer because the printed version, the line weights are so light that all the buildings and structures fall out. So, you have a hard time figuring out where you are. But it does appear that there seems to be some intent to light some of the courts that were never to be lighted.
If I could address that, that is to be a separate plan with the courts. And it is a discussion that we would like to have with the board in the coming weeks, particularly regarding the operational plan. We believe there's an opportunity to potentially gain access for the community to the site, maybe one night a week, to use all the courts out there. And we'd like to work with the board in the coming weeks on a proposal. We'll finalize it, submit it to you as part of this package in the coming weeks, as it does involve the site lighting plan and incorporates those potential changes, John, that you're referring to.
Okay. And like I said, it's really not clear. So, and it just, we would need supplemental details. If I go back to the discussion, site lighting wasn't, you did suggest it could be revisited, and the board would have to take a detailed look at it. Because I would remind all that the NAGDEC, the language of the NAGDEC indicates that no lighting will be provided to allow night use of the outdoor courts, playground, ballfield, or multipurpose field. So, we may need to revisit that particular element. The stormwater management plan, as Mr. O'Leary indicated, has been revised. They did add a bypass plan. That bypass plan became evident during the course of construction. They had a couple heavy rainstorms. We had them throughout the town while this was being built. And basically, in response to the way nature ended up reshaping the site, they modified their stormwater plan to basically correct, collect the stormwater where it ended up and direct it in the way it ultimately wanted to go. So, I think it ends up with a better process, and I have no problem with it. But I do, we're going to need some easement and some other issues. The other piece that seems to have disappeared is, there was some thoughts about providing an above-ground cistern to provide water for the farm. And what they did is they took one of their underground detention facilities, and were going to harvest water from it and keep the cistern full. That appears to have disappeared. I don't, that was their suggestion. I don't know if it's still applicable, but that needs to be squared away and straightened out. They have added a sidewalk and a cart path at the very north. It connects to the off-site emergency access agreement. We need some clarification on that sidewalk cart path, and it needs to be clarified because I'm not sure the current emergency access easement would allow general use of it. So, that may, the language may have to be tweaked.
Understood.
And then, some of the technical matters, I'll just point them out. They've kind of enlarged a couple and reconfigured a couple of the parking areas on the south side of the site, including one that kind of juts out toward Route 22. The interesting thing to note that doesn't show up on the flat plan, that particular parking lot is about 10 foot below the level of Route 22. So, even if cars were to pull in there, you're not going to see them from Route 22. We may need to revisit landscaping because there's some conflicting notes where on the landscaping plan, it says all existing vegetation to be cleared and removed, but there's no landscaping plan to put it back. So, you may need to revisit that. They don't have to go, I don't believe they need to go back to the Board of Health. The only thing they're really changing is the locations of a couple laterals into the buildings. But in doing so, one of the minor technical points is they never finished their thought about how they were going to make the transition. They show it, but they don't tell you what to do with the water line that's left there. So, there's a couple minor issues there. And overall, if you were to take a long, hard look at this and look at the footprint, what they've essentially done is taken elements that were supposed to be outdoors and kind of moved them inside. Because where they said, it says in red, multipurpose court, if you look at the recreation building, that's essentially an indoor multipurpose court. So, the only other thing that Mr. O'Leary mentioned tonight, and it's not clear in your drawings, is that this is going to be a kind of phased construction on the recreation building fieldhouse. And so, you're going to need an interim plan so that we'll approve the footprint of the fieldhouse and all the modifications. But how are you going to leave it in the intervening period?
Understood.
So, that's one of those details that we would need. But other than that, Madam Chair, I don't think, if, when you start to pull the wings off this fly, I don't think many of these are major modifications. It's just a reorientation and a reconfiguration of elements that were already there. And they did say, and I went back through the record, they were very clear that they may change the footprint of the building and that they may change the configurations of some of the outdoor spaces to better serve their user base. And I think therein lies where the outdoor gym comes in, and therein lies where the bocce ball court comes in. I think both of which were elements of their user population. So, those are my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, and procedurally, once the board is comfortable and has had some time to digest it, I don't know if there's further information you're planning to submit about the lighting and that kind of thing?
Well, we have a number of John's comments to address. As I noted earlier, John has suggested a meeting between the engineer and Silo in person or over teams to address the technical issues. We'd like to work through the technical issues with Mr. Andrews, get that to a completed state. We'll submit the EAF inconsistency statement, get that to a completed state. And then, at that point, with the board's permission, we would entertain bringing in a proposal for expanding the potential use of the courts to the community as it impacts the site lighting because they kind of work together hand in hand. So, with the board's permission, what we'd like to do is address the comments, work through the technical issues on the site plan itself, and then we would submit the proposal regarding the site lighting and expanding the use of the courts to the community, if that makes sense, kind of taking one step at a time.
Once the board is comfortable that we have a complete application, you have options, potentially depending on the significance of the changes, you could forego a hearing potentially, or you could hold a public hearing if you feel that's appropriate. And certainly because of the proximity to the highway, you would need to go back to Dutchess County for TML 239 review.
Any questions? Okay, I have a call. So, I noticed just that the landscape development plan set is marked for Silo Ridge Field Club when it's two separate entities, right?
Absolutely.
Any calls that you guys had back and forth, if you could just take very detailed, you know, we had this discussion with boards, sort of no offline comments, but...
Before we do any of that, Madam Chair, I'm going to need an official authorization to do that.
Yes.
And then, I have no problem with...
Detailed notes of what your comments are, how they're going to be resolved.
That's correct.
And then, as part of that discussion, I presume you're going to talk about providing site sections and if there's any, you know, domes, where the lighting is going to be, what direction it's going to be faced in. Because there was a lot of, obviously, you recall that you did a whole visual simulation. This is a cross-street rail trail, so if there's going to be any substantive changes in that, we would need to...
Right. There's no changes whatsoever proposed relative to the domes, operation of the domes. We're keeping that under the original approval. We did come back to you last year, operationally, we needed a week...
Yep.
...to go back a week to make everything work, but there's no intent to change those operations whatsoever, which is the reason we did not include that information or just be redundant in nature.
Yep.
I just want to, and I'm sure this is just caution, the current plan, I hope, is to repeat last year when the community had access to skating. And when you mentioned maybe give an additional night with the light, that's totally separate and apart from last year's program, right?
Absolutely. Last year's program is in writing. It's filed in the town. It's filed in the land records. The agreement that's, the agreements that stand in that operational place continue moving forward in the future. So, the same situation exists. Civic groups are eligible to reserve the ice arena and make use of that. The intent with the courts would be to, just as a preview, not limit it to civic events and open it more to the general population. But there are a number of details we would need to work through with the recreation. It's complex because we've got to work with the recreation committee to make this work. There are a number, it's a good thing to do, but it's going to be work on both the town of Armenia's part as well as Silo Ridge to accomplish it.
An additional night would be much appreciated, and thank you because this program is incredibly successful and it meant a lot to the town. So, thank you to Silo.
And thank you to the board for working with us on developing that last year.
Okay, so, next step, John. You need authorization?
I need authorization from the board to meet, to set up a meeting with the applicant.
Somebody want to make that motion?
Yeah, soon move.
Second.
John Baver?
Oh.
Okay, what else?
That's it. That's all you can do this evening, Madam Chair. And then, direct Silo to, direct Silan to prepare detailed responses. I'm getting confused in my old age. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Silo Workshop, number two.
I guess I can...
Yeah.
Continue. Can we change to the Silo Ridge master plan? I know it's getting late. I know you have another thing, so I'll try to do an abridged version for you while he's bringing up the graphic. What I'd like to accomplish this evening is to just run through the concepts, and with the board having had an opportunity to visit the site, maybe provide any input you have on the individual proposed changes so that we can commence the proof testing portion of it, develop the sites a little more in detail so that when we come back to you for another workshop, we can show more clearly how the sites would lay out and any impacts. So, hopefully, we can get through that. And then, possibly, if possible, Madam Chair, what I'd like to do is just talk a little bit about process for the master plan and what the board's expectations would be for forthcoming submissions with respect to that, so I can begin organizing the consultant... forthcoming submissions with respect to that, so I can begin organizing the consultants to begin preparing materials, if that works for you, Madam Chair and board members.
Yeah, that works. I mean, we have a couple of board members that aren't here tonight, so I think it would be helpful if they were able to participate in the what happens moving forward or any comments, but if you want to just run quickly through any outstanding, anything you want, any highlights...
Okay.
That are different from what we talked about last time.
And maybe just suggestions at this point.
Yeah.
I mean, what you guys are thinking in terms of process, that can be something we can give the board reactive.
Can we go run through this, I'll try to guide you through the slides. We've seen this material, so we're going to focus solely on the individual concepts themselves. Keep going. Stop. Backup one, right there. This would be condo 3.4. I think we had a great view for the people who were in attendance at, we started up at Ridgeline, looking down the hill. It's pretty obvious that this would not have an aesthetic impact as viewed from the overlook up on 44. And similarly, it had very little, little to no impact as viewed from 22. You already have condos 3.1, 3.2, 3.3 there. This is replacing condo 3.4 that is burned down, and it just provided an operation, an opportunity to improve overall operations out there relative to the golf course, storage of golf carts, parking, and otherwise. We tend to believe this one is kind of, lots of details, tons, and we recognize a lot of details with the upper, lower level parking areas. Mr. Andrews is going to have us quite a bit to do on this portion of it, but we see this as kind of, you know, on, on the border of a site plan modification as opposed to a dramatic change in the master plan. But, any comments from any members on this, this one? Can we move to the next one, please? Matt? Oh, can we go to the next one? Keep going. Keep going. If you could back up one, I can take care of a couple of them here. On the top right-hand side, we have what we're calling condo F, it's two duplexes being put in that area. We actually drove through there, and you drove by the area where condos B, C, D, and E are going. We see those two duplexes as kind of a transition as you come into the site. We didn't want something large, as large as the B and C condos there, we wanted kind of a nice transition coming up the hill. A couple smaller buildings fit in there. It fits nicely around the town green. Once again, we see those as generally a site plan modification. Any of the units we're talking about here are generally what I will call replacement units to lots that have been merged, townhomes that have been omitted in lieu of putting in condominiums for D and C. And to recoup any of those units, we need to go through a site plan modification at a minimum. Once again, I tend to believe this fits in the site plan modification. It's really not a change in character. Around the town green fits there like a glove, works well with 3.4, as well as if you look at the bottom of the plan, the A series condos, that used to be a very large clubhouse, clubhouse facility, hotels. It actually occupied that whole quadrant down there, it was mu- much larger, much denser. This breaks it up using the condo buildings down there. It's smaller and massing in scale. You can just barely see that area from the overlook up on 44. It would be my belief that those three buildings would look much better than the large building down there, given the type of architecture that occurs at Silo Ridge. So once again, this one, I, I'd kind of put in the site plan modification category. I see Mr. Andrews.
One of the things I, I would mention is, all the work in that, in that area, basically, the utilities are all in place, it would not involve any substantive change to any of the utilities. The stormwater management is generally in place. Taking out that one big, massive building and replacing it with three actually make some of those engineering matters simpler. So, I, I, I just, from my standpoint, this is kind of similar to what we did with condos D and E. You took a piece of the puzzle out, you, you put it back in, but, but you repainted the surface on it, and, and this would essentially be, both for condo, the F and the A would be essentially doing the same thing, taking out a piece and just putting a new, new shape on it.
I agree at 100%. Thank you for elaborating on that. Anything from the...
Does any of this result in an increase or decrease in the number of bedrooms, or the number of potential residents?
It will not result in any increase in the number of units. If you looked at the master plan, I think we actually demonstrated maybe three or four additional units that would bring it, if you were adding them on, it would bring it to 249 from 245. That is not our intent. Our intent was to show you 14 conceptual units, of which 10 of them would be selected and put into the master plan. We're just trying to provide some options based on your input. So, there's no intent under the proposed modifications at this time to add units.
Or bedrooms?
Or bedrooms. We're well under bedroom count right now, and we do, that'll be a process issue, but it is our intent to provide a complete update. We've been providing you the updates on the number of units as we've been moving along. We're going to go through and update our MDP tracker with the number of bedrooms to clearly demonstrate what's been built, what's part of this proposal, and what remains to be built out there.
I have to, I have to do this for my own mind. So we're looking at moving toward 245, your magic number that was original. So, in, and I, I have to say this because we always have this debate. In Silo's mind, their number is 245. That's the number they're working toward. So when they say no increase, they mean we're not going above 245. Where they sit today, since you just approved condos D and E, is 217 potential. So they are increasing above 217, but they are not being greedy and going beyond the 245. I, I just need to say that because I, it, it, the, the numbers all float around, and, and those are, Silo is 245, they're at 217 today. So with all these machinations, as Mr. O'Leary said, they're going to try to hit 245 or below.
Right. You also need to just clarify that, that the site plan approval only allows 220.
226, actually.
226.
226.
No, it was amended.
Well, they...
It was amended, and the site plan, Phase 1 site plan allows 220.
Right now, you...
Correct. That's what's in the resolution you just wrote.
Right. Right. Yeah. I, I, I'm, I'm, that's why I want to make sure that the numbers get out there, because actually with, with approving condos D and E, it drops to 217.
Right.
It goes from 220 to 217. So, 217 is where we're starting, where they want to end up is 245. And I don't want to belabor it, but, but I, when, when somebody says you're not increasing units, depends on which side of the fence you're on.
Right. And, and just to be clear, as Nina pointed out, that is baked into the resolution that the board just approved. You know, for Phase 1, the original target was 226. And you're now at 217, so what Patrick's talking about, and it would be appropriate for site plan approval, would be any infilling that he's talking about to get to that 226 number for Phase 1. If they wanted to go over for Phase 1, then you're looking at your special permit and your master plan, and that sort of thing.
Yeah, yes.
So the general construct that we're trying, you know, I think the board is working under. And then Phase 2 still requires site plan.
Still requires site plan.
Yeah, that's another, what, 19 units or whatever, John?
Yes.
Number got it?
We'll try to, I'll try to find some way to express this in a consistent manner so that as we move forward through the master plan in coming projects, that we're always on the exact same sheet, and there's no confusion regarding the original approval versus the amended approvals, and what has site plan approval and what does not have site plan approval.
And just as another, the, the question of bedrooms is relevant, is relevant to your wastewater, and it also has some relevance potentially to other impacts like traffic and that sort of thing.
And Patrick, is the composition of, of bedrooms or units that are part of condos versus freestanding homes changed dramatically?
Actually, typically less bedrooms than the freestanding homes.
Less, or less condo bedrooms?
Less bedrooms within, in individual condos. Some of the houses out there have five, you know, large number of bedrooms. You know, the condos are generally limited to three and four bedrooms. So by virtue of doing more condos, there's a natural decrease in the number of bedrooms to begin with. And through the course of the project, to date, pretty confident the MDP tracker does reflect a decrease in the number of bedrooms across the board to date.
But it increased the number of condo buildings?
You're increasing the number of condo buildings, but for example, if you look at condo, the condo F series, the duplex over there, those will likely be, say, three and four bedroom condos. If you look at some of the houses where the lots have been merged, the lakeside lots, E lots, or NCM lots, for example, those were four or five bedroom houses. So you're taking two houses that had four or five bedrooms and replacing it with two condos that have three or four bedrooms. So you get a net decrease of two bedrooms across the board by that, by switching out in that manner. Does that make, is that clear for everybody? So, as you work through all of these, it's, that's going to, you know, it'll be a continuing thing, right? We take out four or five bedroom homes, or have taken out four or five bedroom homes, and you're replacing them with three or four bedroom condos. So you're, there's this constant decrease in the number of bedrooms that's associated with it. Less wear on the infrastructure, lower demand on the overall utilities, et cetera. So, we see it as a positive across the board, and would think the board would as well.
Want to keep going?
Sure. Matt? Keep going. This is an area, this is the family barn area. If we look at the left-hand side of the photo, we have four duplexes planned over there. It has a driveway coming off of Wood Duck going in the back. There's already two approved lots back there, 18, 19, right? Nine and 10, that are approved, buildable, could pull building permits on it. John smiles because of the mil, I call it the million dollar driveway that goes to the two lots back there. It just seems to make sense. It's, it's in a nice area back there, it's not highly visible, be it from 22 or from Route 44. If we're going to have a million dollar driveway, seems like it should serve four units as opposed to two. And it also just helps from a massing standpoint, you know, this is more evolved around community, a sense of community than it is massing. And just having those two lots felt very segregated back there, pushed off the beaten path, and a little more density. It was the architect's intent that it would just give it a better feel across the board. I see that as being generally minor. The area to the right-hand side, we drove by that, that's where the Temporary Fitness Center is, the parking lot over there. There's also an approved lot over there. Let's see if I get that one, that's eight. All right. So there's an approved lot eight over there. And we're suggesting reconfiguring that area in part to better serve the family barn, which is a focal point of Silo Ridge. It's a recreation area, gathering area for Silo Ridge, get the parking working correctly with drop-offs, and good pedestrian access combined with utilizing the lands over there for some more duplex condos. And this one I saw to be a little bit larger in scope as compared to anything I've talked about, you know, so far this evening. And certainly would welcome any comments or thoughts as we move into trying to proof test this concept, if the board has any thoughts of this type.
The two new units down by the million dollar road were in a very wooded, hilly, sort of tough terrain, it appeared, so...
Yes.
And it's also in the SPO, so presumably, once you get sort of this more sort, better sorted out, it would be helpful to kind of visualize what that's going to look like.
Okay, that's certain. I, I tend to believe it won't be visible because it's being tucked...
It is so wooded, yeah.
Yeah, because you have high ground to the south of it, so it's tucked behind the high ground, and then you have a large, you know, topographic relief to the front side of it, so... But I agree, it would be incumbent upon us to come in with the appropriate cross-sections and demonstrate from a visibility standpoint that it doesn't impact anywhere.
Patrick, I have a piece of advice. I don't know what impact ultimately a public comment has, I don't fully understand how the HOA's work inside of Silo mentally, but I would speculate that there would be people across the street from those units who might not be thrilled about them. And I would suggest to you that, and they're not people who are going to be necessarily in tune to these meetings, I would suggest that, that be socialized internally with those homeowners who are going to be visually affected by it, so that you don't find yourself in a situation, and while I'm likely abstaining, the rest of the board is going to find themselves in a situation where people are lining up to say they have a problem with it, and we're far into this process. I think that there's a plan, I know, but I understand maybe there's a plan to socialize it, but I would strongly suggest that you do that.
And we will share the results of that. It's a very good point, it has not taken place. We need to proof test these concepts, and we want to speak with the board first regarding it, but as we move forward, it will need to be socialized and introduced to them. And once again, I would find it incumbent upon us to report back the results from the internal community so that you had an understanding, and a document to understand where the community stood on this, and I think it's a really great point, thank you.
What is the mechanism to do that? Like, how does that work? I mean, as a microcosm, sort of what this board is there, a board internal to Silo Ridge that has the option or the opportunity to opine on some of these changes?
I think, and I can bring Mike or Zach up here, but I think they have at least once per year, like, an ownership meeting, and I think they have the ability to call additional ownership meetings as necessary, possibly for something like this, where they bring the residents together to introduce the concept, and let them know what their plans and intent is moving forward.
And when does that happen relative to the, to you launching a formal process with this board?
Probably later this fall.
Later this fall, okay.
The next 38 or so.
I would ask that at whatever public meeting you have, the Silo meeting you have, you let your homeowners know that nothing's going to happen until it's approved by this board, essentially. So if they want to come and tell us what a great idea it is, it makes it a lot easier for us to approve it. So they have to know that the road leads through here to that. Thank you.
Let's talk about landscaping, since we're talking about, you know, the impact on visual issues.
Absolutely. You know, what you're seeing are concept plans up there. The landscaping will be consistent with the master plan that has been approved for Silo, I think, across the board. First of all, we've maintained and fulfilled the commitments made in the original plans from a landscaping standpoint, and it's their intent to continue that. These are only concepts... And it's their intent to continue that. These are only concepts. We have not had a landscape architect prepared detail planned yet. We understand we're gonna provide those as part of any package that we'll be submitting to you.
What type of trees or bushes are you considering?
It's all native varieties and one of the things, because of the master plan and the nature of the master plan, the master plan has specified the varieties of trees, the types of architecture that we're going to be utilizing out there. And we're not proposing any changes to that. That is already an approved document through this board that has already approved the trees, shrubs, hardscape materials that are used out there. We're not proposing to make any changes to that. What would, it's not a change, but what will be unique to each of these sites, be it three-point-four condos A, condos F, or this area, will be the individual landscape plans that will come before the board for their review as part of the site plan package when it comes in.
So you specify what kind of growth you're going to be employed?
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
Can you, I'm sorry, just going off what Jimmy asked, can you just kind of explain number two and how it goes right into the buffer and everything? I just don't understand that. It seems to go right across the buffer zone for twenty-two.
Oh, this, wow, it's going, it's going into the scenic protection overlay. Doesn't, there's nothing that prevents the building from being in the scenic protection overlay zone. What it does do is it regulates.
Not the scenic protection, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the Route twenty-two buffer zone. I know you are going to work on the scenic protection, sorry.
Once again, if you look theoretically in the buffer zone there, we're not putting the building across the buffer zone or in the buffer zone. We have some.
Right.
Right, it's going, or the intent is to leave the foliage and the trees within the Route twenty-two buffer zone in their natural state. I know, maybe it doesn't, it appears there's.
It appears that the backyard goes right through and that's why.
Yeah, understood.
And in point of fact, if he were to put the approved site plan up there, I think you would see the clearing probably on the approved plan matches this. Because it was addressed, that's one of, I think there's actually a site cross-section through there because it is so close to the buffer zone, but you can't see it because the buffer zone goes up and then drops off. So that's one of those things that Madam Chair had brought up, that we're gonna need to see details there. But I would venture to guess if I put, if the original site plan was put up, that house is tucked right back in that corner.
It's a good point.
Thank you. And it, there's a lot of work to get that house in there.
All right, what's left? Just the, the building at the front by the gatehouse?
Your thoughts, your thoughts generally from an approval process, I don't, this might not fall in that site plan category or we think we're still potentially in the realm, depending upon the details, you say?
That was the detail.
Okay, we'll take that. And the last one? Keep going.
I don't think everybody toured this. I think we did.
Keep going.
I don't think you guys went down.
Keep going.
So maybe you just spent, oh, you did, you went by the new welcome.
Keep going. There we go. Keep going, one more. There we go. This is the general store. When we, when you entered into the site, the gatehouse is the red building that, there, and we drove up Eagle Pass to the valet area and then met up there. This is the proposed general store, which was part of the original commitment. This is, would be at this location. It's accessible to the public, so people don't have to go through the gatehouse operationally. It all makes sense. It still has good connectivity for the residents of Silo Ridge via cart paths to get down there. There's also onsite parking for vehicles, be it for the public in general or the people from Silo Ridge. It actually cites well in there. Golf hole is immediately adjacent to it. So could be a nice area to have an outdoor, you know, cafe patio type thing, open to the public to sit around, have some coffee or snacks or otherwise. We think this is a good location. One of the things we certainly look back to the board for is, you know, some concurrence on its location. We think it works well for Silo. We think it can work well for the community. But we, we try not to do the thing, we wanna get out of the habit of trying to do the thinking for the community and rely more on the board to handle that, so. Any?
My only thought on this was sort of back to Jamie's point, which is, this seems like something you would wanna run past the folks that own the units that are directly adjacent to this. It probably wasn't their expectation that there was gonna be a publicly accessible store there, but, you know, from, but it sounds like you have a mechanism or a process to do that.
That's a good point, and I don't know that we had considered that, so. We're gonna put that in the list of comments from this evening and go back and begin working on some of this. This, once again, I, this one, you know, from a board perspective, it's minor in nature, in my opinion, but I don't know if it is actually consistent with the master plan. And this may kind of elevate a step, John. Your thoughts?
If I remember correctly, directly across the street from this was going to be the Sales Marketing Center, which was ultimately to be converted into this general, the public persona of Silo. So, which is now, if you drove in there, there's a pump station as you come in and then you go up the hill and that's where all the landscaping stuff is. Well, right there was originally supposed to be the original sales center, a building very similar to this parked right in there. It's still on the site plans. There was a big parking lot behind it. So I think you have to kind of, in that context, give us an idea of what you're doing. I imagine you're doing away with that because it never became a reality and you're replacing it with this. So I don't think it's a major departure, but I think because you are now moving, that was, that's Lot twenty-four, I think.
Yes, yeah.
And it's, you're, you're, you're getting pretty tight to Lot twenty-three, to your point. So I think this is a little more complicated site plan. It, it is a bit of a plug and chug, but it's not because you're now introducing the public element to it. So you, you might wanna see some, a little, you know, we're gonna have to spend some time buffering and protecting the residential units there. Because they were, you know, they expected to see residents there. So, but I think you gotta look at the entire context of the area. Because I think there was a big parking, I think there was twenty, twenty-five parking spaces across the street at one point in time, if I remember.
You know, something I have not looked on that side of the street and kind of forgotten. I drive past it and don't give it much thought.
Well, yeah, because it was, it's never gone beyond being the landscape shop. Because the landscape shop is always supposed to go where all the trailers are in the back, if I remember correctly. So there's a lot of.
We're getting there.
Yeah, so it's one of those things that I think it can, you're going to need the overall context to properly evaluate this one. I would suggest this one and the ones over by the barn are the hardest lift. The other ones are basically probably puzzle pieces that just get plugged in. But I think these are going to, you're gonna need to toy with the master development plan a little bit and revisit some of the aspects of that in addition to the community wishes. Nothing personal, but does this mean we're not gonna be seeing you for a little while?
We have, we, we.
I'd say the same thing to Troutback.
I have two subdivision applications to get before you. We discussed them the other night. The CM lots and the LL lots, converting three to four and six, seven to six. So we have plenty more to entertain you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And thank you, board members and staff. Appreciate it.
All right, before we get to Keen Stud, we just have a couple other matters. Minutes from eight thirteen? Any changes to the minutes? Anyone?
I did receive some minor ones from Walter today.
Yeah, I sent in some minor ones, very minor.
All right, I have a motion to approve the minutes of eight thirteen pending revisions from Walter.
Make that motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so next meeting, we have a couple of things we need to talk about. Hollyhock Trail referral. Can we talk about that really quick?
Sure.
Just so that everybody's aware where we are, what the process is for that. Who wants to kick it off?
Well, we have a meeting tomorrow at two PM to flesh out the details.
Okay.
But from what I understand, they are looking to develop a piece of property.
For us.
And they, they came and gave you a brief presentation. The only mechanism to do that is a special use permit issued by the town board. The town board, they have made application to the town board. The town board, I believe, and I'm paraphrasing because I don't know for certain, has decided that the best board to conduct the proper review would be the planning board. So what they are either going to do or have done is make a direct referral to you folks to conduct a review of the proposal as you would review any special use permit in front of this board, including doing the basic legwork for the seeker analysis. And at the conclusion of your work, what you would do is make a recommendation back to the town board concerning seeker, either a neg deck or a pos deck. If it's a neg deck, you would probably, I would, I think my recommendation's in Paul's. It would be a preference that you flesh out that neg deck and send it back to the board for their consideration. And then you would make a recommendation for the board with respect to approval or denial of the special use permit. And should you entertain approval, it would be an approval with conditions and that you would outline the conditions to be enhanced, adopted, or eliminated by the town board as they see fit. But ultimately, basically, for all intents and purposes, you folks are gonna review it like you have the approval. And rather than a resolution of approval, you're gonna send a letter of recommendation covering all those matters back to the town board. Did I, did I correctly summarize that?
I think so, but the formal referral has been made, Judy, correct? We have received a formal referral, so that, it, I think it was last, Roseanne, it was after last week's meeting, right? Okay, so we have received a formal referral before the town board on last Thursday, right? You meant last Thursday?
The referral happened with Ian. We haven't discussed that for about one week. Because there was confusion about what, what need was needed. Because basically, it was our understanding when they came and they just did a presentation to say, this is, you know, kind of what we'd like to see, but nobody ever asked anybody, you know, for anything. There was no formal. So then I think you and Ian had a conversation on Friday, right before you went on vacation, I think, right? And then we figured out what you needed, or Ian figured out what you needed, and I hope you got it.
Yeah, so, so we do have an application. I think the idea, we're gonna have a kickoff call tomorrow. The idea would to have it on the agenda for September tenth for board discussion. And John and I would provide any comments like we would do for any other application and the board will look at it, think about it. I agree with John's summary. I think, you know, the more we can provide to the town board, because it's not something that they do ordinarily, the better. You know, whether it's the seeker or, you know, even potentially draft resolutions with conditions so that they can have those when they take it up, because they will do the hearing. I think they'll probably have to do the GML two thirty-nine M referral, because we don't really have an authority. We don't have, you know. But in any case, we move our review along and get them to a point where the town board can take it up and take whatever action they deem's appropriate.
Okay, I have in my notes that it refers to us on the twenty-first. So if you could recirculate that package around to the board, just so everybody has it in advance for the tenth, and then you, then you, John and Paul will review the materials and provide comments in advance of that.
Yep.
Okay, then there's the three other referrals, planning board rules, zoning board rules, and food truck rules. I think some of us have sent comments, but not everybody. If you could all, everybody take a look at the regs, the proposed regs, and send comments to Paul, and he can consolidate all of our materials. Other items on the September tenth agenda are Rambles Road, God's EBA, Boonville, right, Judy? So that's on the tenth. Then there was also a new survey circulated for fourteen Main Street, the ten mile table. The new survey, I think, indicated that the staircase was not intact in the public railway, so.
It's, it's not clear, but I think that was the intent. I, the staircase wasn't shown, so.
All right, well, it's interesting that the survey changed.
Oh, Ian and I had that discussion early on.
So y'all, you take a look, you let us know, but theoretically, if they have to come back here, it would be on the tenth as well.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yep.
I guess it depends on which surveyor you hire, what kind of surveyor.
No, it's the same surveyor.
Yes, same example.
And, and unfortunately, they, regardless of the survey, that's one element of what was required because he's in the historic district, so there's, there's other elements. So this board still has to act on it.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your patience. Keen Stud.
We got R and R concrete to come back on that day.
Okay.
And possibly Fox Holler Timber Harvest if he gets us to be pulled.
Okay.
Which he probably will.
All right, well, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Diana Kolov of Del Bello, Donnellan, Wine Garden, Wise, and Whitaker here tonight for Keen Stud. Also, we have our team. We have Juan Torres, the Principal of Keen Stud. We have Aaron Warner of AKRF, who the applicant has retained to assist with the seeker process on this application. And we also have Peter Sander from Running Engineering, who I know you all, you all know. So I, I just wanted to just give a little bit of a background here of where we are. We did submit a Part One EAF. We submitted a scope for potential environmental impact statement. And we also submitted to your board all the studies that had previously been conducted for this project for all the impacts. We do understand, we've had discussions with, with staff, we understand that there are some changes that will be required to the Part One EAF and to the scope, and we have submitted that, but I understand that that's not, you know, may not be before you tonight. But we do hope that your board will start the process of reviewing the Part Two of the EAF and proceed with a determination of significance. Because, you know, I think we've gotten to the point where we've given your board the documentation, documentation information that it needs to do so. We also know that obviously Mr. James is here tonight to discuss the reasonable worst-case scenario study that we've been working on, you know, for the past year and a half. You know, we are hopeful that at this point, and judging by the memory on them that we did receive, that the scope of that study is now established, and we're hoping that your board would, would confirm that.
George, board George.
No pressure, George. No pressure.
So yes, I did prepare a brief memo talking about the reasonable worst-case development scenario that would be studied for the environmental review. I think everything in there is, is information that we had discussed both with the board and also with Peter and, and Saratoga and Associates. And so the idea there is, is that, is that they will model a reasonable worst-case development scenario on their subdivision plan. It will include all elements. There's a, you know, fourteen-page attachment, which was produced by, or ten-page attachment produced by the applicant that goes through each site that identifies elements that are in it. And we went through this. We've, we've, you know, amended a few things, but essentially, it's mostly from the applicant. And, you know, we had asked previously for them to, you know, find comparables, similar properties that have been developed and, and use that to, use, you know, those comparables to inform what goes on these sites. And then, you know, ultimately though, we have agreed that once the model is developed, there will be a review of it by the town staff to see, you know, because a listing of, of elements in a spreadsheet is not three-D, right? So you actually have to see it, right, and before it gets simulated. And then it's gonna be simulated in photo simulations where you have existing condition photographs, proposed conditions. photographs, proposed conditions photograph, and then there's a lot of technical materials in terms of how those simulations should be done, and the viewpoints that need to be simulated, and how it all should be presented. I'm here to answer any questions if the board or the applicant has any questions or comments about the materials.
Yes, this really should probably go to the applicant, but since you reviewed their visual impact in each lot.
Yeah.
There's asterisks that are not explained, so it has a pool or a pond on every lot indicated with an asterisk next to it. It has a gazebo on every lot with an asterisk next to it. I'm assuming that's a potential. If you just look on the first page, agricultural structures and uses.
Yeah.
That's an asterisk, but it doesn't relate to...
I may have omitted, or, okay, so the asterisk is agricultural structures and uses that may be shown outside of RDA. So that's the, do you want to come up here and talk about this?
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah. I put all the asterisks on there. So the asterisks are pertaining to agricultural structures or uses. So in that case, we developed the residential perimeter for residential uses to be within that area.
I don't understand, a pond or a gazebo?
So like a pond could be, it's just a more of a change of land use, so that could occur outside. So say they wanted to construct a pond that, one, serves as a fire reservoir, but two, allows their horses to go up there and drink out of the pond. In that situation, that might be located outside of the residential perimeter that we had established. So for that, I just wanted to note that those might be located outside of the box.
It's non-literualish.
Yeah. So just for an example, so residential could occur within here, but say we have a pond that goes like this, right? So it's outside the residential perimeter because it's supporting an agricultural use. In the instances of the pools, that's all going to be in the residential perimeter. That's why I only put the asterisk on the pond part. Yep.
Anyone else? For the site photographs, are you going to sort of oversee the time, location, lens, all of that, of when the existing conditions photos are taken? I ask only because there's a sort of, you know, changes that are happening on the site all the time currently.
Yeah.
And so sort of drawing that line in this hand, what can constitute an existing condition would be helpful.
Well, okay, I mean, that's a very fair point. I mean, in terms of the technical, you know, the lens and when they should be taken and the conditions that they show, that's all outlined in the memo, you know, it should be leaf-off, no snow conditions, they should use a 50-millimeter lens, with some certain situations where they can deviate from that, but mostly they should be 50-millimeter lenses. But as far as, like, if there is disturbance on the site, like, when is the cutoff point? I did not address that, right? That is something that maybe if you have guidance, we can amend this and we can put that in there. But, you know, essentially, we've said they should be existing conditions photographed, but I did not say on this date or representing this condition.
So are you guys, you're planning on doing new site photography to capture the existing condition in leaf-off, so like in October of this year?
Yeah, so even talking about that, as you know, we did do this site photography when we were first, you know, when this change was first retained, and it was, as far as I understand, in compliance with, and it was with the leaf-off condition. So, you know, there's no reason to, there has been no change to the site or to anything else.
It's been a pretty dramatic change to the site, new buildings, new fences, new clearing, new, so since those photographs were taken ongoing right now, I mean, Juan, you can speak to that a little bit better, I suppose, but new fences on the north side, a bunch of new fences on the north side, new barns.
All agricultural changes, so we built the fences for paddocks for the horses, we did maintenance work in riding arenas.
Yeah, new clearing, new pads for vegetation, for riding rings, all that. So that has changed since the last time the photographs were taken, all of that is visible from Dela Verne Hill, so it would presumably represent the existing condition.
I mean, so I think, you know, obviously, that's an ever-changing, you know, possibility, right? So we're going into the fall now, I mean, again, the concern is the leaf-off condition, so that's something that, in order for us to redo those photographs, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but we're looking at it for purposes of determining, like, yes, existing condition, but also what, to be able to then simulate what it is that we've discussed here, the reasonable worst-case scenario. So, you know, that's...
Yeah, I guess you guys should sort that out.
I am, yeah, I am unfamiliar with the extent of the changes, but you do want to have it represent current conditions, right?
Yeah.
Is what the existing conditions are. And it being, you know, the time of year, you would want to, so if there have been substantial changes, significant changes, changes that affect the nature of the view, fencing can do that for sure, then you would want to retake at least those photographs, and it'd probably be in November when you would want to do that in terms of the leaves on the trees.
So, I mean, if, what I was going to say, and I know you were going to address the seeker process with the board, but I wanted to just point out that if it is something that, you know, if the board is moving towards a positive declaration, if the board is, you know, is moving towards, right, determination of significance and that's in the EIS, that we could, that's something that we could consider in the scope, and we'll, you know, we'll obviously work with AKRF on that point, but I don't think there's, you know, benefit to keep going around and round on that. I think if we, if that's something that the board wants to see, then that's something that we can incorporate into the scope.
Fair, okay. John or Paul?
I have no, this is, I have no comments on this particular matter.
This is Mr. James, and I'm pretty much satisfied.
And, you know, what I'm hearing though, from George, is that you're comfortable with the worst-case analysis or the modeling that they've provided, and, you know, with the additional comments that you have in the memo, you're comfortable with the methodology?
So, so the methodology that we outlined was essentially agreed to, so I don't think there's an issue there. We have not seen the actual model yet, right? We had, so if you recall back in April, I think, or maybe it was in March, there was a, you know, you saw earlier versions, and we had issues, and we talked about those, but since that time, we've had discussions, and I think we've come to an agreement, but I haven't seen that yet, right? And so that's one of the things that...
The actual model.
Yes, we haven't seen the model, and, you know, the subdivision is what they're planning on doing, right? So it just needs to be populated, and once it's populated, we'll take a look at it. And, you know, I'm hopeful, because we've talked about it a lot, and there's a lot of detail that they've outlined on lot-by-lot assumptions, that there won't be any surprises.
This is, if you guys will recall, this is what was originally discussed, was trying to get more detail about what actually might occur, be built on these properties.
Right.
And make sure that it was kind of consistent with what you're seeing in other developments around the area, so that when, at the end of the day, the visual simulation is done, and you have your declaration of covenants and restrictions, the public and the board will see, you know, what will potentially be there on a lot-by-lot basis.
Right.
And these seem to be consistent with, I mean, a good representative worst-case...
Yeah, a reasonable worst-case scenario. So they don't, all of them, they all don't max out everything, there's some variation, right? Which you want, right? You want to have a little bit of variation that goes through, but it's generally, you know, butting up against the maximum on most of them. But there is a little variation which I thought was important, because you don't want to just copy and paste everything across the landscape, right? Because that's not, that won't be real. And so you want to try to make this as, you know, as real of a reasonable worst-case development scenario, so that you all can see these things in a way that makes sense, which is through photo simulations, and then you all can make it your determination on significance and then mitigation from that.
Right, and this is all for seeker review purposes, one of the things that the applicant has talked about and offered, a lot of this is in, a lot of these lots are in the scenic protection overlay area, and so you would have site plan review anyway, but the applicant is suggesting that that be extended to all of the lots, so that anybody, you know, for in terms of the zoning law, you'd have another shot at review of any specific project that comes in. And as long as it's consistent with your seeker review, you know, it should be fine, but if somebody wanted, you know, a 20,000 square foot footprint, you could take a harder look at it.
Right.
That kind of thing.
That's right.
Yep. Okay.
And I appreciate the detail of the specs you wrote down, lenses, all of that. You mentioned that there will be some longer lens shots from seven places, I think it was, selected or by, who was it selected by or was required by the board? That may have been a decision made before I was on the board, I'd be curious where those places are.
Okay, so what I've written here about the lenses is that most photographs will be taken with a normal lens, a 50-millimeter lens, but then the applicant, I left in an option, so that if, like, you have a viewpoint that's very close, you can use a wide-angle lens, right? So, because you don't want to cut off part of the action, right? The better thing is, is to actually compromise on the lens, so you could actually get the entire action in. And then sometimes, and this is, occasionally you see this, and I think it can be used to good effect, and I wanted to leave it as an option, is that you can sometimes use a telephoto lens to simulate the acuity of the human eye, right? So you can focus in, so we normally see things at a, right, a 50-millimeter equivalent, but we can, you know, if you're like at a scenic overlook and you're looking into the distance, right, you can see and focus in on an object. And sometimes, a telephoto lens can simulate that sort of focus of the person looking at an object in the distance. And so normally, you know, most of these things don't have that as an option, but I think that's a really good option to have, especially if you have a scenic overlook, right, where you can focus in in the distance. And so I wanted to leave that as an option for the applicant to do.
My question was not about lens choice, it was about site choice, where those pictures will be taken from.
Right.
Because I think there was an agreement that they would take from a couple of view sheds.
Yes.
But as I said, I wasn't on the board when they came up with those view sheds, and I'm curious what they are.
It was Saratoga with the British Planning Board, and there's a map that shows the viewpoints that were selected from different roads, or actually a couple of viewpoints elected, and then they added more viewpoints on the Depot Hill and other areas. That was the final map that was...
That's right.
Yep.
So in the documents, there's actually a map that showcases the viewpoints.
Yeah, and it was, there's a lot of, there's a lot of views from Dela Verne Hill looking out, just because of the value of that hill. The initial ones just had the view from the lookout, we were like saying, no, you've got to actually go down the hill and do it at a different elevation, because the view changes, and they added that the last time. What, there were 14 viewpoints that they did the last time, and, you know, our view, we thought that that was a reasonable selection considering the visual resources in the area. I think that, you know, the idea that you over-select on Dela Verne Hill is the right thing to do, because I think that's the biggest impact, but you've got to actually do the depot hill, you know, road view as well.
That speaks to my next question, it's really a question for all of us. Foliage is a big deal.
Absolutely.
Around here, people come up and they love to look at, do we need to get a simulation, a picture from Dela Verne Hill in the middle of foliage season?
Oh, that's...
I ask only you, I mean...
I will leave that as a judgment for the board, I will say this, is that that's not typical, right? Typically, you do these things in reasonable worst-case visibility conditions, which normally means leaf-off, no snow. All right, now, if you're going to say, well, you know, if there's a lot of tree removal and that's going to affect the foliage, you could define that in another way. But I don't think there's so much tree removal, right, so to affect that. So I wouldn't, it's not obvious to me that that would be the case here, simply because of the nature of the, you know, it's largely open fields now, and it's going to stay largely open field.
Yeah, they're talking about a change of 1.2 acres in forested lands, so...
Plus, we have to provide plantings, so even more trees for the peepers.
With lots of colors.
Yeah, too, because they have some pretty colored peepers. Good question, yep.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. So go back to New York City. Thanks for being here.
That was somewhat impolite. I'm sorry.
I'm a North Country guy, what do you expect?
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Paul?
Okay, so that's settled, right? The methodology, as far as the board, you guys are okay, that can be built into the visual analysis that the board would be doing.
The only issue remains is when the photographs are taken, right? And so I think, I think it's very reasonable for the board to say, if there have been significant changes, that it should reflect current condition. So I mean, that's something they have maybe amended later.
Now, how do we get it out? We look back at what was taken before, the photos?
No, they did take new ones in November.
Okay, they are existing conditions.
Yeah.
That, you guys all right with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so the other piece of what we're doing, I don't know, do we need, George, do you want to stay around?
If I'm excused.
Thank you, George.
Have a safe trip back to New York City.
Thank you.
So the other thing that the board needs to do is, and what we talked about doing for tonight, is beginning the review of the FEAF Part 2. The board has talked about some, obviously, visual is a concern, and some other concerns over the course of past meetings, and for seeker review purposes, if the board identified, all needs to identify one potentially significant adverse impact, and that triggers the need for an EIS process. The, what we're suggesting is just sort of generally going through the Part 2 tonight so you can familiarize yourself with it. There is some information, we're going to be getting some updated information from the applicant on the FEAF Part 1, and then if the board is amenable in preparation for the next meeting, to the extent that you have questions tonight, or that John and I, you know, can provide additional information for the board, we'd like to essentially tee up the board's full review of the EAF Part 2 for the September 10th meeting. In its FEAF Part 2 review, what you're looking at, and just looking at the first page of the FEAF Part 2, taking land as an example, the first thing you do as a board is decide whether or not there are going to be any impacts on land based on the question below impact on land in bold, that here, the proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of... on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. If you answer yes to that question, then you have to look at the questions below, and then, again, this is all based on the record that's been prepared by the applicant, and as we all know, there's an awful lot of information that the applicant has brought forward, it's an awful lot to sift through, and we want to help you with that. But in your review, as you answer those questions, if there's not going to be any impact, and I would use for an example, the proposed action may involve construction on land where depth to water table is less than three feet. I don't believe that there's any of the residential areas that, and, and, you know, we can confirm this, obviously, where, where it's proposed to do any construction within three feet of the water table, you know, so you could easily say no impact at that point, or no minimal impact.
I'll give you a perfect example. Taking Paul's question, it says the relevant Part One question. So you have a Part One EAF that has been submitted, that's why we focus on that. If you go to the relevant Part One question, in this case, it is identified as E2D. E2D basically says, what is the average depth to the water table on this project site? The average that, that the applicant provided is 5.2 feet. So normally, what you would do is, the average depth to water table is not three feet, it's greater. So that would be a no or a small to moderate. Myself personally, I would check it no, going forward.
Wow, so that's, I mean, that's no to minimal, you know, if you had a site where an applicant was proposing essentially to build houses in wetlands, you would check moderate to large. And if those, there were enough houses, or you thought it had a, you know, significant enough effect on lands where depth to water table is less than three feet, you may say that, because every moderate to large impact you identify, you then have to have an explanation as to why or why not that's a significant adverse impact, okay? So, you know, that, that's essentially the, the approach that you go through in your minds as you're looking all of this, and, and you do that impact area by impact area. There are some impact areas, like if you turn the next page to geological features, okay, then, you know, we suggest that potentially checking no here, and that's because, based on the FEAF Part One, you know, that's, that's like a, one of the bits of information that's included in there, and there are no unique geological features on the site. So therefore, if you would check no, and then you don't have to answer those questions. So that's kind of the approach, but at the end of the day, your review of the FEAF Part Two, and, you know, I'm not saying we're getting there tonight, maybe you do with some of the issues, all you need to do is find one significant adverse, potentially significant adverse impact, that triggers the EIS process, and at that point, the applicant, you know, prepares a scoping document, and you involve the public, and the public can identify potentially other significant adverse impacts. So, all that to say is that if you identify any significant, potentially significant adverse impacts tonight, and you issue a positive declaration, all that really does is start the environmental impact statement process. If you identify on September 10, other significant adverse impacts, that would go into that EIS process. Or you may find that there is moderate to large impact for which an explanation can be provided as to why that's not a significant adverse impact. So, you know, this is really the beginning of the, you know, the more serious stage of the environmental review process, and, and none of the impacts are off the table, except for those that are obviously not relevant. So, that, that, what we would propose to do is really just briefly go through the EAF Part Two, see what kind of questions you all have, see how we can respond to them, I'm sure the applicant can pitch in on that. You know, there is an awful lot of information that's been provided, as I said. If we get to a point where you've identified some significant adverse impacts tonight, and we did put together a draft resolution based on prior discussions that the board has had, but again, the door does not close tonight on identifying significant adverse impacts, either by the board or through the scoping process. That door remains open. All you would be doing tonight is starting that environmental impact statement process. So, with that, we can start to go through quickly, if you'd like.
Can I just make one real quick comment?
No.
The seeker area has been structured so that as you're going through the Part Two EAF, each of these bolded points directly shows how we are addressing that impact. So just wanted to note that as you're, if you're looking at them at the same time.
Right, yeah, so, and, and I think, you know, based on what the applicant submits, and John and I kind of going through it, and hearing what the board has to say, because you all haven't really had a chance to talk very much about this, we can prepare comments for the board and, and, you know, respond to questions, and basically, basically be ready on September 10 to complete the board's FEAF Part Two process, even as you're, even if you decide to move ahead tonight on starting the EIS process.
I have a question, Paul.
Yep.
So, as I look at this, there's one section where moderate to large impact may occur, and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven line items were checked.
Right.
Isn't that enough now to say, I mean, we can look through every one, but if there's one, seven are checked, doesn't that say it's a pretty?
They need to have to, so, for example, if you're looking, if you had, if you checked moderate to large for less than three feet, moderate to large for, for each of those, you would have to, in, in your, the EAF Part Three, you would have to either explain why it's not a significant impact, or say that it is a potentially significant adverse impact that needs to be addressed in the EIS.
Let me be specific, because I'm not understanding something. Number nine, impact on aesthetic resources.
Yeah.
Check yes. Every time we discuss this, I've talked about the comprehensive plan, it is my main, oh, by the way, in here, they mention foliage.
Yeah.
Seasonal foliage. Here, proposed action may be visible from officially designated federal, state, or local scenic and aesthetic resources.
Yep.
Well, there's no question that De La Verne Hill relates to that, and as we go then, that, it becomes, at least to me, significant.
Right.
Impact. And I would say we want to do a positive based on that, at least for Section Two.
Yeah.
So, if we're, rather than go through every, you know, so we can move this along, if there's one, if, if one of the board members say, no, this is a positive, or do we have to go through every item? Because that's only going to delay what they need to do.
Right, it, it, and I guess the intent is to kind of, you know, decide whether or not the board wants to move forward with an EIS process, which you can do based on one, two, or three significant adverse impacts, but then also to give the board a chance to, you know, look at the other impacts and decide whether or not they need to be addressed in the EIS as significant adverse impacts, or whether, you know, there's additional information you may need, or whether you don't need any additional information.
If, if, if I may, just to, just to try to maybe simplify things, based on our understanding and what we heard from you folks, you'll see that there was a lot of blanks, but there were basically three areas that were checked, and we reviewed the comments, and, and to your point, Mr. Tawoski, number nine, impact on aesthetic resources. I think the, the general consensus of this board was yes, and when you look at it, there are, in your minds, based on what you have said, several moderate to large potentially, potential impacts. Moving along, we'll go to number 17, which is consistency with community plans. To your point, again, I think Mr. Walsh, I think you, and I think Mr. Dietrich have all expressed concerns about consistency with the master plan. Is this consistent with our master plan? Is it consistent with what the town wants to do? So again, based on our hearing, we checked 17, yes, and there are several moderate to large impacts that, that need to be explored, that need to be developed. And we go on, community character. Again, having heard what everybody said, I think everyone had opinions on this, we, we checked, so, and, and in our estimation, not to diminish the rest of it, but we focused on what we heard to be those key issues. And to your point, the, the process requires that you go through the entire thing, but you don't have to go through it like a fine-tooth comb. The process requires, if there's something else that you folks jump out at you, that you deem to be potentially large, that cannot be explained, then it has to be addressed. But up to this point, based on the information that we have received and hearing your comments, this was our first cut. So to, and again, to simplify your point, we have identified at least one significant potentially adverse impact.
Right.
And in point of fact, we've identified three areas. So, yes, you could move ahead on that simple basis alone.
But I wanted to make it clear that there are other areas that the board could also want to include, either want to include in the EIS, or want more information to explain a potential moderate to large impact, and that beyond that, you know, the, you know, basically, what we wanted to try to do tonight, if the board wants to, is to at least touch on each of the other impact areas, including those three, and to see if the board has any initial concerns about any of those other potential impacts, okay? And we don't have, I mean, we could do that in like a minute-by-minute, you know, go-through, we don't have to spend a large amount of time on it, but the idea would be to make sure that we understand if there's other concerns that we can't, John can't immediately address, you know, in a one-liner, that we need to do more homework on that for the board, so that when we come back together on September 10, that you'll have, you know, the information that you were asking for in order to respond to that.
If I may, I'm Aaron Werner, I'm with AKRF, nice to meet you all. Filling in for Peter Ferro, who's been handling this, but I have a pretty good understanding of where things are. I think the first point I'd like to make is just that if we're going to have a positive declaration issued by the regulations, and our understanding and our opinion here is that the Part Two needs to be complete, because you move on to determination of significance based on a full Part Two that's checked off everything that you've looked at. We don't feel it's necessary to go back after you issue a positive declaration identifying one or more issues, to go back to the Part Two again, that's just not the way that the process is meant to work. The EIS will address the potential significant adverse impacts that your positive declaration specifically lists, and you get to that POSDEC from going through the Part Two. So, we're happy to help along some of the other areas that we've, that are in the Part Two, because there is an extensive record that Peter's office had prepared that actually goes line by line with the questions, with answers, an 800-page backup analysis package with that. So, that's available to, to walk through if you want, but we, we did prepare a draft scope for an EIS that does address the three things that, the areas that have been identified by your consultants, the community character, visual, community plans.
Yeah, and so, you know, and, and I understand the applicant's position on this. My feeling, you know, having dealt a lot with seeker, is it's a lot more organic process. If I look at it as a linear process, yes, ideally, you would go through the entire FEAF Part Two tonight, and, you know, have all the information. Unfortunately, what happened is that there was a disconnect somehow, and the information that was provided was not what we were expecting that would enable the board to go through that Part Two discussion tonight. So, you know, the alternative would be to put this all off until September 10, and if that's the preference of the applicant, that's, that's fine, but, you know, seeker is not meant to be, you know, a linear process, there's a lot of different points where information can come in that may identify a new significant adverse impact, you know, and at the end of the day, the board's job is to take a hard look at potential impacts and make a reasoned determination, and, you know, if, if that means that the impact rises to level of being a significant adverse impact, then it's in the EIS process. If it's a moderate to large impact that needs further explanation, that can be done, and, and maybe even end up with it being a significant adverse impact, but, you know, so, I mean, one way or the other, but I would not advise the board to try to do a full EAF Part Two review tonight. I, I, my suggestion is if you want to go through it and get some initial thoughts down or raise some additional, initial questions, we can do that quickly. If the three issues that John mentioned in your minds do already rise to a significant adverse impact potential, then we do have a resolution for you, but it's entirely up to the board.
And, and we appreciate all the work, obviously, that, that the board is doing and that the consultants have done for, for this purpose. So, just wanted to be, make it available that we have, we're a resource if you have any questions.
Yep. What's your preference, you guys?
I'm going to make a motion, and anyone can amend it however they like. I move that we start going through Part Two and we give ourselves a cutoff with one hour, 11 o'clock. Feel free to amend the motion to the next, next meeting or 10:30, but that's my motion.
You all can put it all off to the next meeting if you prefer.
What's on the agenda of the next meeting?
We just kind of went through that, but.
Yes.
We're going to be doing the, you know, procedures law, 81 Randall, Spox Hall of Timber, R and R Street, 14 Main Street, and Mead and Trails.
It, I mean, the, the referrals should, everybody should be submitting their comments to Paul in advance at the meeting, that should be quick, pretty quick. All of those, all of those items are pretty.
You still have to bring it up.
Short.
Because it's the following week the town board meets.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're all here.
Yeah, we're here.
Someone, someone has to act on my motion.
I understand you have a long agenda, but.
There's no discussion, you have to second, or the motion fails.
Is there a second?
I'll cycle it.
Call in favor?
Aye.
I'm staying. So.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
You say no? Okay, so.
No, no, from what I've heard, it really sounds like they want to have it done, and I'm not ready to have it done tonight. We're not looking to have it done, we're looking to start discussing. I understand that, but what was just said was that it needs to be done, so I'm not ready to sit here till 11 o'clock. All right, I just said, we've had, I'm looking at a document, the FEAF from 8/28/2023. FEAF from eight twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-three. I made my comments on this. It's almost exactly the same.
Well, if I may, I just want to remind the board too that on, on, uh, June eleventh, I did submit a full document with everything checked. I don't think, and in my estimation, that was based on my review of the record. You, it was a guidance document only, and if you remember, I told you it was kind of like take-home to, to take a look at it. And, and what I would suggest to you is that even with the, the difficulties in there, part one, I don't, unless you folks have something that I don't know and would prefer that you advise us of, I don't see anything other than the three items that I've, that have been identified that rise to the level of a significant, potentially adverse environmental impact.
And that's our opinion, John, that the board did not have the benefit of going through the records still. And they have a need to get an updated FEAF part one. Um, and the applicant ostensibly would prefer to, uh, have it all done at once. So if you want it all done at once, that would be the, you know, that's the option.
Can I make a suggestion? Do, does anybody on the board have a specific question about the impact categories that you want to ask the applicant about that isn't already covered in John and Paul's memo?
Yeah, so apart, apart from the three that, you know, uh.
You know, I'm abstaining enough, I'm not participating. I'm just wanting to make an objective, third-party suggestion. On what you, how you might engage the applicant since that.
Are we getting tripped up on the, the statement that you made that seemed to suggest if you approve this part two and presumably associate a resolution, you can, that's it then, is your guys' view that you can't go back? Because I, I think that's what's causing the problem.
That is what we, you know, and the board has that concern. Because for them, they still have not had the benefit of the discussion related to all the other impact areas. I think, you know, they could very easily pull the trigger on, uh, an EIS tonight based on the three impact areas that, that John identified. I think, you know, everybody agrees there's some issues that need to be, uh, addressed. The other ones, uh, they haven't had a full discussion. And so to suggest that we go through it tonight and conclude the FEAF part two, you know, the alternative that I had suggested is it's not a linear process. Seeker is not intended to be that strict. And, you know, there, so there was kind of a middle ground that could be done. Um, but, you know, because the board needs to have, know that it's still open to their review, that they, they, they have not gotten to that point. And they're not going to get there tonight.
So, so I think if, if I may, there are certain, as you mentioned, there are certain areas uh, in that EAF part two that are clearly not impacts. Okay? And I think that it would be very helpful if we can go through that tonight, as Mr. Van Cott had suggested. Um, and go through those areas that are clearly not going to be an impact, um, as a result of this proposed action. And so that would help you to eliminate so that it's, you know, I understand it looks like a daunting task because it is, um, you know, a, a large document, there's a lot of subcategories and it can be, it can be overwhelming. So I think it would be helpful if we can address those areas that we, you know, that have document, that have been documented not to have, um, any impacts.
And those, I mean, I, I think, you know.
Can, can I make a suggestion? Can we just start? And as we, and, 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 well, you know, uh, oh, no disrespect to motions or anything else, but we're spending more time debating the process than doing the process. And, and so as a consequence, what, what I, what I might suggest as your consultant is that we start with the document that you have in front of you and we raise the issue and we get as far as we can get until somebody says enough, no mas, and we go home. And then we go, we pick up where we left off. And, um, unfortunately, you're probably not going to get your POSDEC until September tenth, but at least it would be one and in your minds is supportable by a complete EAF part two. So with that, having said that, I'm gonna.
That was moved, that was the motion eight minutes ago. So that's all we can operate under now. We have a motion. Let's proceed.
Let's, yeah, let's, let's, let's clear the deck of the ones that are automatically no impact.
Well, I was just gonna, I was just gonna start and, and just quickly go through each one. Question number one deals with impact on land. With, overall, it's checked, yes. You go through the various categories, my, you, you can look at it. We'll go to impact on geological features. To Paul's point, there is none. It's a no, simple. Impact on surface water, we know there are issues. Some of them are, are non-issues. Um, and as a consequence, um, it's checked, yes, but you can look at the detail. Impact on groundwater. Go ahead.
So when we say impacts on surface water, when you put in ponds and everything and that increases the, the amount of surface water, is that anything we have to be concerned about under any of the letters A through?
Well, for instance, it says the proposed action may create a new water body. To Peter's point, they were talking about potentially putting in.
Ponds.
Ponds. Um, usually ponds of this size are going to be under, under an acre. They're going to be relatively small. That's typically seen as no impact. Particularly if you take them into context, they're putting in the ponds in some cases to simply be used for fire protection water in an area, excuse me, in an area that doesn't. So that can be seen as a, a positive impact. So as a consequence, normally what you would do, unless they were creating a rather large impoundment with multiple millions of gallons, it would be considered no impact.
And that's my question. Are we going to do Las Vegas or Phoenix here?
The, the ponds are because the fire department requested that if someone in the future is going to build, they have somewhere to pull water from.
So like two and a half, three acres, something like that?
I would say less.
I'd say much less.
It really depends on how deep the pond is, all the technical mumbo jumbo.
But it, I don't think they have the resources out there to create ponds that size. There's a couple areas where, where they may, but I, I don't think they, um, and I think they've got a couple minor ones over by the, the old paddock area. Um.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, no. So, um.
Impact on groundwater, okay? There's going to be dry water from wells and they're going to be putting, uh, wastewater back into the ground.
And, and I'll, I'll give you a perfect example. Most of these would be considered small to mi- moderate, no to small. Because under the health department guidelines, if your lot is greater than five acres, it's presumed you can find a spot to put a well and it's presumed you can find a spot to put a septic system. Most of these lots are in excess of.
Nine, seven, over fifteen acres.
Yeah. So, um, normally as an engineer, you basically say greater than five acres and.
And we have the well-tested tenant back it up.
The key there are the, the soils and whether they're suitable for wastewater. Um, and, and you have soil profiles, um, and also the information about the aquifer, whether there's enough water in the aquifer to serve, and, and I think that information.
And they do have that information in their eight-hundred pages.
Yeah.
They've done soil testing. Matter of fact, the, uh, the arena has its own wastewater disposal system that was approved and it's, it's a reasonable size. It's not a, um, there are wells in the vicinity, there are well test reports and other things available. The well yields vary from, I think I saw one, it was almost twenty-some-odd gallons, uh, down to, uh, at least five. And all of them meet or exceed the health department requirements in the surrounding area.
Yeah, there, there is. So the next one would be, uh, impact on flood. And, and since this is not in a flood plain or, uh, is, this, we were considering this to not be an, uh, issue that needs further analysis. And that's all information that's based, that you can find in your FEAF part one. Impacts on air, the question is whether the proposed action would include a state-regulated air emission source. You know, these are residential homes, so that's not an issue. Uh, impact on plants and animals, yes. And there is, uh.
I think there's a habitat analysis.
There is a habitat assessment and analysis that's in the record. If any board members are concerned about that, we can make sure to provide that to you and pull it out. That was one of the issues that I ran into. You know, it's an eight-hundred-page document. And it's hard to find individual studies in that. So anyway.
But they exist.
That's a note. Uh, impact on, uh, and just stop us if you have any questions. Impact on agricultural resources, clearly there will be an impact on agricultural resources, um, but.
I have an issue here. D, eight D, proposed action may irreversibly convert agricultural land to non-agricultural use, blah, blah, blah. Um, I lived for many, many years next to an equestrian development hidden hills in Los Angeles. And every site was an equestrian site. Until every site started building more and they lost the equestrian uses. And my understanding is that for this to be agricultural, equestrian, um, property, equestrian use keeps it agricultural. But do you think every person who moves, purchases a lot is going to purchase a horse too? So, no, you don't. And I know that they're not.
But, but, but recall.
There wouldn't allow it based on breeding. And ideally, you do have restrictions in numbers of how many large animals you can have in your zoning code, which is one large animal per acre. So it'll keep the numbers low. And ideally, the main thing is that with the restrictions we provided, if someone just puts a house, you still promote agriculture. You still promote.
Because remember, fifty percent, fifty percent of the lot has to be maintained as open space or.
Ninety percent.
Ninety percent agricultural land. So in other words, the way this is being proposed, they're protecting elements of the land. From my standpoint, I think this needs to be, and that's why I had highlighted it in mind, it probably needs to be expanded in a DEI, in, in an EIS process. That's one of the ones I would have added because for the very.
Let me, let's.
But, but anyway.
Just put it in the right lane. At least initially, it's moderate to large impact.
Yes.
That requires further explanation.
Yes.
And that may be something you all want to, uh, suss out a little bit more, uh, in advance of the next meeting because that could provide a basis for if they're going one way or the other. One of the things that happens with the, uh, FEAF part two is if there is like an acreage requirement here and they exceed that acreage requirement, then it automatically becomes a moderate to large impact. Here, they're going to have more than two-point-five acres of this conversion in an agricultural district. So that, that becomes an issue of concern. The other thing that I noticed as I was starting to go through all this is while media does not have a farmland protection plan, Duchess County does. So I think that's something that's worth looking at, uh, just to, uh, you know, see, see how that may affect whatever explanation you may want to provide. Um, number nine is impact on aesthetic.
Before Paul jumps on, the, the other thing you got to realize is, um, moderate to large does not automatically presume that it's a negative. Sometimes it is moderate to large, but it's actually a positive. And, and for instance, if you were, the, 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 the preservation of ninety percent of the lot, and let's just put it that way, can be couched as a positive. Because you're, you're guaranteeing that. So I, I just have to make sure that you understand that.
And that may be part of the explanation too, because they are preserving a lot of, uh, open space ostensibly as potentially for agricultural purposes. Um, you have the impact on aesthetic resources and that's one that, uh, you all have identified previously. Uh, you started to go through the questions. And I think there probably is, uh, you know, and board, you know, let us know. But, you know, the things we checked were, uh, obviously it's going to be, uh, visible from a officially designated aesthetic resource.
I just urge you all to go through the comprehensive plan of media where delivered, relative to you said, it's mentioned over and over. If it didn't say that, you know, then it's a different choice. So if it meets the requirements of the comprehensive plan, I have no problem.
Well, for, for this though, since, you know, we're talking about aesthetic resources, is the board comfortable with the, uh, boxes that are checked there that are moderate to large? And does the board, secondly, feel that there is a potential significant adverse impact visual resources?
Um, if you look at whether after similar projects, visible or hidden, similar, but I mean, the equestrian center, if that count is similar. So, um, no or small impact may occur.
Is that what you would recommend?
Uh, F. I'm, no, I'm saying that's what's currently there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's my, that's our opinion. What's your opinion? You know, so if you want to check that.
I, I'm, I'm used to seeing it now. I don't know.
Okay.
But will I be used to seeing another one nearby is the question.
So I, I mean, there, there's no rea- if, to be, if you were going to be belt and suspenders consistent, you would move that to, uh, moderate to large and have it evaluated.
Let's move it to moderate to large and evaluated.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's, that's that one.
Impact on historic and archaeological resources, they did, this, this site's been studied to death. And there's, there's nothing there.
Shipau approval of a archaeology report, um, no impacts from, in their eyes.
And the only question really that, that I have with this is just, uh, confirmation that none of the development areas would, uh, impinge upon any of the identified, uh, chance of.
They wouldn't. I think the phase one B did identify something, but then the lots were changed to avoid it, right?
Yeah, no, it was, it was amended to, uh, remove that area from the.
Totally out of the site now.
For that one, the only archaeological site was identified right here.
Okay.
Right, no, sorry, right there. And so that's not even in the application anymore. Everything else was extensively shovel-tested, plowed, analyzed by perch wood or botany, so.
So, so, I mean, I, I don't know if you're comfortable at this point, if you want to see the studies. But, you know, our recommendation would be that, that, uh, there would be no, uh, significant adverse impacts because there's no proposed development that would affect archaeological resources. So that, you can hold on that, but, you know, and we could provide that additional information if you want. Um, going to the next one, impact on open space and recreation. Again, this is one that automatically, uh, we would suggest is a no. Because, uh, you know, the proposed action will not result in a loss of recrea- recreational opportunities or reduction of open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. Uh, that, that was our suggestion. It's not an officially designated, uh, open space area. And it's not a public recreational resource.
Agree.
Um, cri- critical, no questions, impact on critical environmental areas. Those, uh, critical environmental areas are designated either by a local government or New York State DEC. There are no designated critical environmental areas, um, in the area of the projects, right? Um, number thirteen, impact on transportation. The, uh, you know, we checked yes there, suggested checking yes. Uh, the, uh, applicant had done a traffic study. That's part of the, uh, original record that, that you have. If there's interest, we can provide that separately so that the board has that.
All right, I can give you a summary real quick about it. Um, if you don't mind, yeah. I mean, twenty-three, uh, residential lots. I think the peak hour traffic was twenty-three trips in the morning and like twenty-nine in the PM peak, peak hours. All the level, all the intersections studied are at a level of service A and they'll continue to be level of service A with, uh, this build-out. All the level, all the intersections studied are at a level of service A and they'll continue to be level of service A with, uh, this build out. No impacts were triggered and, you know, Creighton Manning did the traffic study. Typically, a hundred peak hour trips is an impact or requires additional analysis. We studied, I think they studied three intersections around here. And it all, you know, falls within the standard of a no impact finding for traffic.
Excuse me, could I ask you when that was done?
I believe it was twenty-twenty-one.
Twenty-twenty-one, when we first started, started the process.
Okay. Since COVID and living on twenty-two, the traffic in this town and from Millerton to Dover and down has completely changed. There's much, much more, especially on Fridays and Sundays. But there's more, so just, I'm not saying that you're wrong. I'm just saying it's not the same.
I can speak on that. It's probably just because more people are living up here full-time.
It is.
Yeah, so the traffic assessment assessed it for full-time residences for all twenty-six lots.
Yes.
And now it's twenty-three.
Actually looked at a higher, yeah.
Well, like I said, I'm not saying you're wrong, but my commute used to be an hour and fifteen minutes. It's now an hour and a half to get to purchase.
So, your baseline is, your baseline of existing conditions is twenty-twenty-one?
Yeah.
It's my understanding, yes.
Thank you. Um, the only other thing that, that fell out of that, there was some recommendations regarding the intersection of, uh, Old Twenty-two and, and. That was supposed to go through the county and I never saw a response back from the county.
There is a response letter in the appendix. They essentially kind of agree with our assessment on that. So, what we were planning on doing, if you're looking at their old Route Twenty-two intersection and the Depot Hill Road intersection, there's that weird triangle, right? So, no one likes that triangle because no one knows how to operate in that triangle. So, what we're proposing is to create a standard intersection as part of the development of this project.
Just tell me through something. If, if you had a hundred cars at a peak time, what would the effect be? Would be you'd have to have some traffic mitigation plans?
They, usually what happens is, so he mentioned level of service and they look at intersections and how long you're stuck at that intersection. And so, there are different number of seconds that you're stuck in an intersection from A to F. You know, that, you know, the longer you're there, the worse grade you get, you know? And F is considered a failed condition. So, you know, that's when mitigation would be required. There are sometimes for other levels of service where, um, you know, there's enough of an impact that the applicant may propose something to address that.
There's impact criteria that DOT has established to for level of service degradation, I would call it. If you're going from an A to a D, like in this case, we're staying at A with the project to factoring in background growth as well.
Well, another factor would be people who are working on the estates. Uh, that would also impact, uh, uh, transportation and the, I mean, because, let's face it, they're not going to mold their own loans, right?
But they also might not all be built at the same time.
Well, that's something you have to look at. There's maintenance people that are going to be back and forth on the particular states. You have to look at that. Sounds like me, it sounds to me like we need a new traffic study or something that's basically.
Well, you know, one of the questions, and maybe, maybe the starting point would be to look at what was provided. Okay, and we can make sure that's available to you. Because, you know, essentially the questions go to whether the projected traffic will increase the, exceed the capacity of the road network. And, and so, that's kind of what they're getting at. And maybe just, you know, we can, we'll get that one to you. And, and, you know, that, that's something that, uh, there could be further discussion about and maybe you guys can provide some additional information between now and the next meeting. Impact on energy. Obviously, we're going to be creating or generating or using more energy, uh, but, uh, you know, none of these really.
Doesn't trigger, it doesn't trip any of the thresholds.
Yeah, it doesn't hit those thresholds. Impact on noise over light, uh, residential uses. Uh, there will be some, uh, noise, there will be motors, and there will be light impacts. So, that's something for the board to consider further in terms of whether you think, uh, more information is needed. Uh, impact on human health. This is just me. There's nothing that I see or John sees, uh, that would be, uh, more than no or small impact. The only thing I wanted to, uh, mention to the applicant, and I think we talked about this early on in the review, was, uh, the potential for pesticide or herbicide contamination. And my understanding, talking with John, is that, you know, the likelihood here is that the nature of the farming that's occurred on this property is, you know, been for producing food stock, you know, for, for livestock or whatever. It's A, it's corn, it's something like that. It's not like on the other side of the river when we talk about apple orchards where metals are an issue. But if that's something the guys could confirm, that would be.
Well, the, the other, the other thing to keep in mind, quite honestly, is, um, uh, this is called Keen Stud and it used to be a thoroughbred, um, breeding ground. And I, I would submit to you that some of the horses that were probably bred on that site were, are worth more than some of the houses we're now debating. But, uh, so normally you would not expect herbicides, pesticides, or anything like that to be used around an asset like that. So, it, it, the presumption is it's not there.
Yeah, this is something, uh, information detail. And then the last.
That's very accurate. So, we, we don't, we actually don't spread the path where the horses go in.
Yeah.
Horses probably have better healthcare than I do.
And then, then the last two are, are the community plans and community character. And, and I, I, I think that's undeniable because it's been discussed and talked about so many times, so.
Then the last one that's not on here, but is proposed by D E C, town media isn't a disadvantaged community. Um, and that's a designation, designation that has been given to the community by the state of New York. Uh, that requires analysis of the potential impact on a disadvantaged community. But our suggestion for the board, and we can provide more detail on that if, if it's needed, is that, you know, based on, uh, the other impacts, uh, it's, it's not, uh, there's not going to be any different level of impact on a dis-, just by its designation as a disadvantaged community. So, um, I think that one's a fairly easy one to resolve as well.
Paul, has that been adopted yet? Is that something we even need to consider because it's not in the realm of adopted law?
Because seeker was changed, okay? Uh, and, and, and speaks to that. And now D E C has draft regulations that are out. And they actually have a, a new draft F E A F, uh, part one, two, and three.
Yeah, but if you think about random E A F mapper, right, the relevant E A F would have occurred.
Yeah.
So, that doesn't seem.
It's not the belts and suspenders and going back to the, see, going back to the statute. Um, and not just, uh, you know, you have these proposed regulations. D E C has accepted comments on the regulations and they're trying to figure out what to do. But just, I, I think for our purposes, if we kind of say, okay, well, if you don't find any other significant adverse impacts, then there is no, you know, separate significant adverse impact on the designated, uh, disadvantaged community. That's, that's where I would suggest that we end up. But I, I don't think you can avoid saying something about it as, uh, so that's, that's all I've got on that.
This is tangential and it's not something I've seen in any of our paperwork, but the affordable housing contribution fees, this, I assume, um, project would be subject to those same, that same fee structure.
Yeah.
Well, not fee structure, but that same requirement.
Workforce housing.
The, the early, the earliest versions of this, um, suggested that they would offer, uh, payment in lieu of.
Right.
And, and that was in the, that is in the record, um, early on. So, we may have to, as this progresses, make a referral to the.
We, we do have.
Yes.
The zoning law requires that we make the referral, but I would wait until you, you know, you're a little more comfortable.
Typically, you make the referral at or about preliminary, which doesn't exist until the F E, in this case, the E I S is completed.
Yeah, and, and the hope would be, you know, going back to our conversation about Silo earlier, is that when you make that recommendation or ask the, make that referral to the housing board, that they would come back with the fee schedule that we would include in any approval resolution because it's not the board's place to make that up.
I'm just hoping that they recognize there's another community within town paying those fees and they should use that as a starting point since some kind of parity.
Yep, yep.
As opposed to profit.
It, it makes sense if the idea is to pay the fee in lieu.
Oh, no, I, I understand that. I just don't want to see this project be charged one thing and Silo be charged another. I, I think someone has to, has to remind the board.
The code has what it requires.
And this.
The code has what's required.
Yeah. This app, application is subject to the new law.
Right.
This application's subject to the new law. So, that's all very clear in the new law. You know, the issue with Silo is that it started under one law and now it's.
It actually started before the initial law was developed.
That's right. Yeah, that's right, yeah, right.
So, if I can, if I can circle back, I know, I'll tell you the part one. So, I think, you know, um, I commend everyone for going through the, the, the part two and the next day matter. Um, just to circle back, I, it sounds to me like based on the discussion tonight that, um, I think, um, the, that other than an explanation, a few points, which we will provide, um, that essentially your board is still looking at the same three areas, I think, that you were talking about in the beginning. And so, for purposes of us, um, you know, I think what we're looking to do is to submit a scope that's going to be consistent, um, with what your board, um, is going to, uh, proceed with, with a positive declaration. And so, um, and so, that's, that's, I just wanted to confirm that those were, you know, the three areas that, that we're talking about, subject to explanation on the other areas that we were, that were raised.
Well, as a subject, I, I don't think that the board signed off on any other areas except for the ones that were the very low hanging fruit that are obvious. Um, I think there is still a need, you know, like we have to give them more information on the, uh, on getting the traffic study. You know, are there other, uh, questions? I mean, John and I can probably pretty quickly go through and summarize and point to the different documentation in the record, to the extent that's not already provided by the applicant, um, to make sure that you have a comfort level when you finalize any E A F part two on September tenth.
Aaron.
So, that we can do.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the scoping that got submitted, the draft included addressing every single one of those questions, where the explanation is, what the appendix is to each study and where you can find it and why the thought that, hey, these three have been identified as significant, all of these have not. And this is the explanation why. And if you want to see more, here's appendix, A, B, C, or whatever it might be, that explains everything.
So, there is a section in the draft scope that we did submit that is section F. It's at the end, it's three pages long. It's called Issues Not Addressed in the D E I S. And it talks about, um, all the areas that are part of the part two that we've determined are not required to be analyzed in the D E I S and why.
Right, and that has not happened by the board at this point?
Right, but it, but it's all based on the record that they've had.
In your full.
But it's based on the record, the eight-hundred-page record that they've had for a while.
Yeah, and that's, and that's, you know, we need to get the board there.
Yeah, absolutely. I think we just want to be prepared, um, for this kind of tense meeting, um, you know, so that hopefully.
I think you ought to just clarify that the board that's sitting here is not the same board that approved the conservee. So, so when you sort of say like it's in your eight-hundred, you know, the eight-hundred pages that was already done, none of the people that are sitting here were part of that process. So, there is a bit of a, a catch-up there.
Getting there, I think we made some progress tonight. Does the board want to, uh, talk about doing the positive declaration for those three issues tonight? Or do you want to put that off and do everything all at once, as was suggested by the applicant's plan?
Is that, if applicants preferences, is there a legal one?
It's, it's, it's not a preference. It's, whatever it is that the board wishes to do, obviously, we want to move forward with the process. And it is a process because once there's a scope that has to get circulated, there's a timeframe for doing that, you know? There's a timeframe for us to take the photographs that we need to take. So, you know, obviously, the sooner this, this can, this can get moving, the better it is.
Yeah, and, and we can, John and I can look at the draft scope and provide comments on it for the board if you want. Um, again, that's not with any prejudice to the board identifying other issues through its, uh, completion of its F E A F part two review, but at least to keep the process moving, we could do that as well.
So, as, as I understand it, just to summarize, what's going to happen is, these folks are going to go away. They requested some additional clarifications where to find it. They're going to get us that information. We are going to, um, unless told otherwise, take a quick look at the scope, make any recommendations for the board to consider in terms of language and bring, and review their stuff. And next week have, uh, be able to discuss the open points and potential, or the tenth. Review the open points and potentially close the E A F part two and issue the POSDEC and scope.
Right, and that would entail providing some information to the board ourselves.
Yes.
Sort of the same analysis.
Okay.
Kind of analysis we did, looking at what the applicant had provided.
Understood.
To, to help the board, like we did with TRAPDEC, basically.
So, okay, so we got a lot of homework between now and then.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Want to do it all at once or do you want to try and do the resolution tonight?
It sounded like John just gave a process that deferred it to the tenth.
I, I hated to do that, but I think it's, I think it's the proper course of action. And then these folks get released once and for all and they can, uh, go do what they got to do.
Yeah, the thing is with the draft scope, when it's provided, really, the regulations don't provide for a lot of back and forth. You know, once you identify the significant adverse impacts and they've provided a draft scope, then, uh, out that goes to the public and to the involved agencies. And what we would suggest, you know, there's a certain period of time, three-day period of time, um, you know, but within that, probably want to have a public scoping session so the public has an opportunity to look at the draft scope. It's up on the website, available for them to review. And then they can come in and comment on it. And they may suggest other questions that, uh, nobody saw them, you know? So, uh, we want to get that public involvement and make sure that they understand that the board is taking a hard look at, at all of this and, uh, you know, looking to provide guidance to the applicant on the scope of the E I S that must be prepared.
Okay, sounds like we have a plan.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Thanks, thanks, everybody, thank you. Uh, can I have a motion to close the meeting?
So, move.
Second?
I have new business.
All right, new business.
Uh, the twenty-fourth of, uh, September is Rosh Hashanah. The board, the side, the town board canceled or rescheduled their meeting on Yom Tov. I'm asking that we do the same, it's one of the three holiest days of the Jewish year and to not, to hold immediately on that day, I think, sends a message that is less than positive.
Okay, what, uh, what's the options, Judy, for moving it to the day before? It has to be the day before.
The day before, the first day of Rosh Hashanah.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's the twenty-third?
Have to be.
Twenty-second?
And the day before that is, is the eve of Rosh Hashanah.
Can you move it to Thursday, the twenty-fifth? Where's that, the town board?
No, the town board.
You guys don't have to stay for this, it's okay.